All right, we're gonna start. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please rise for the Star Spangled Banner. Mr. Greeley is accompanying us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Okay, we're gonna do our clicker test. Let's get every clicker out. Soon as Tim's ready, we have our question. So the question that tonight. The 1928 animated film Steamboat Willie featuring Mickey Mouse was a silent film. One for yes, two for no. You don't have a clicker? Well, you gotta run for town meeting.[136.44][136.44](Laughter). So one for yes, it was silent, two for no, it was not.[144.66][144.66](Laughter). Okay, we got 170 votes. And 85 yes, 70 no. No, it was not a silent film, it was fully synchronized with sound.[172.51][172.51](Laughter). Ah, well, we gotta give our guys over there credit for the question. So we have 170. Are there any town meeting members who have yet to be sworn in? Either new or old town meeting members? If so, please rise. Yeah, looks like they all showed up on the first night. I recognize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Dunn. We have one? Well, you gotta rise. Okay. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye? Say your name. Will participate fully and will fairly evaluate all matters before town meeting. Will vote in the best interest of the town. I support free speech. Will treat others with mutual respect. Will conduct myself in a civil manner that is becoming of an elected town meeting member. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties incumbent upon me as a town meeting member of the town of Arlington in accordance with the bylaws of Town Manager Act and the general laws of the Commonwealth so help me God. Now, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dan Dunn, chairman of the Board of Selectmen. It is moved that if all of the business of the meeting as set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, April 30th, 2018, at 8:00 P.M.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, if we don't finish tonight, we'll come back Monday. Sir.
(Inaudible).
Oh, can you run through the screens again, Tim? We'll run through them again. Thank you, Mr. Deist. Have we had any announcements? Announcements or resolutions?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Marr, precinct 14. As I do every year, I announce that the Sims Nonprofit Corporation, which administers funds left over from the dissolution of the Sims Hospital, are available for grants. We have approximately just short of $1 million that we administer, myself, Charles Lyons, former selectman, and Jackie Keshen, a former town employee and town nurse. Some of the beneficiaries in the past are in the Council on Aging, Boys and Girls Club, Visiting Nurses, Youth Consultation Center. We generally give away about $50,000 a year if anybody is interested. It's for health-related organizations in the town or the greater Arlington area. So if anybody has any potential requests, we're glad to have them. They're due on June 1st. Any further information you would like, please see me at the break. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other announcements or resolutions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to Article 3, Reports of Committees. I call for any reports of committees to be received that have not been given yet.
Allen Reedy, precinct 16, and chair of the Permanent Town Building Committee. Mr. Moderator, move that the report of the Permanent Town Building Committee be received.
All in favor? All opposed? So received.
Committee's been very busy this year with school projects. If you, those of you who have been in town a while, or if you just sort of plum the depths of your memory, a long time ago, this town, including its elected officials, appointed officials, town meeting, town voters, came together to support the rebuilding of all seven elementary schools in Arlington. And with the reopening of the Stratton School this past fall, that project has been completed. However, not to, not to put an opportunity aside, now that we've rebuilt the schools, we're adding on to them. So this year, the addition to the Thompson School was opened in the fall, and the project has just started to add sixth classroom addition to the Hardy School. In addition, the Gibbs School project is well underway, sort of in the home stretch right now, and looking to completion later this summer. And it will be opened in the fall as a dedicated sixth grade school. Other projects include, or upcoming projects include, the major renovation rebuild at the town yard, as well as a couple of floors of the central school and senior center. I would like to recognize the hardworking members of the committee. We do meet all year. Projects really don't stop. Adam Chapdolane, town manager. John Denizio, I think I saw him, there he is. CFO for the school department. Bill Hayner, who's usually over there. Bob Jefferson, fire chief, who's usually right there. Brett Lambert, who's the vice chair of the committee and a Stratton parent. John Marr. And Steve Nestreck, our new facilities director. And I do want to take a, make special note of a long-serving member of the committee who's still on the committee, well-engaged in all of our work, but somebody who was there with the school rebuilding projects from the very start up through the present day. And without his input, certainly the projects would have been done, but there's, they would not have been done as well as they were done. So I hope that you would join me in expressing the gratitude of this town to the former chairman of the Permanent Town Building Committee, John Cole.[611.04][611.04](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Reedy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Rich Greco. I am the administrator of the Arlington Retirement Board. At the request of the Finance Committee and Vision 2020 and other entities, the retirement board has been asked to do a presentation each year to the town meeting to let you know what's happening with us. So, um, the Arlington Retirement Board is one of 104 retirement boards in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it is operated independently or autonomous, but follows the same uniform retirement laws as all boards. The Arlington Retirement Board consists of five voting members. The first member is the ex officio, which is appointed by the selectmen, and the position that they choose is the comptroller. That's currently vacant on the board, but appears we may have someone soon. The next appointed member is also by the selectmen, and also with input from the town manager, and that is Richard Keshen, esquire, local attorney. The two elected members are elected by, they either have to be active members or retirees within the system. Some people ask me, how come I didn't get to vote? It's because you don't work for the town. If you don't work for the town, you don't get a vote. And so the position is elected by the retirees and active employees on a three-year basis. The two elected members are currently retired treasurer and chairman of the board, John Billifer, and retired police lieutenant Kenneth Hughes, who were both reelected in August to a three-year term. I just wanted to take a quick moment to note that Mr. Billifer was first elected on August 1st, 1972. He has been elected 16 times by the retirees and the employees to represent them. So if anyone's looking for a model of public service, I think they need to look no further than John. So it's my pleasure to work for him. The fifth member is chosen by the other four board members. And the member cannot be basically an employee or retiree of the town. The board reappointed Mr. Ken Steele to a new three-year term in February. There were three applicants. Mr. Steele is an investment advisor with Bay State Financial Group, and was the first fifth member when pension reform expanded the board to five members, and he has been there since 1997. And so he was elected to another three-year term. The Arlington Contributory Retirement Board has approximately 600, excuse me, 730 active retirees, 300 inactives. Inactive employees are people who left their money, they may be coming back to retire, they might not have decided what they want to do yet, and 600 retirees are survivors. All permanent employees working for the town, working more than 18.75 hours and making more than $5,000 a year, are members of the system. The only employees we do not have are certified teachers, they are under mass teachers' retirement. Okay. So the Arlington Contributory Retirement Board, as of January 1st, 2017, and it's that date because retirement boards in 1937, when they were set up, unlike the rest of most municipal government, is set up on a calendar year. So the reason you see the January 1st date is we closed the books on December 31st, and what are the numbers when we open for business on January 1st? The unfunded liability last year was $140 million. The assets were $139 million as of January 1st, 2017. Now, I want to just take a moment and share a few things with you, because last year, a few town meeting members were brave enough to email me or ask me, I didn't really understand what you were talking about, can you tell me? And where this is a committee report and there's no questions, so I want to answer their questions. What does the unfunded liability mean? If you look up at there and you imagine that there's $140 million of unfunded liability and $140 million of assets, it means it would cost $280 million to fully fund the system, in which case we would no longer need an appropriation. So what the unfunded liability means when we talk about an unfunded mandate is the money we still need to acquire to become fully funded. Okay? The next question was, how did we come up with the $280 million? Every year, we have an actuarial study done, based on the data that is provided from our payroll, how many future employees there are, increases and so forth, people come and go and cash flow items. The actuary comes to the board and says what it would cost to fully fund the system. And that was $280 million. So I'm hoping that that answers the question for those people that asked it. Although the unfunded liability for 1-1, 2018, hasn't been determined yet, I can say with some good news, the board assets closed on December 31st, 2017, with over $158 million. And what the significance of that is, is when the market crashed in 2008, we were at $140 million. This is the first time since 2008 that we've closed the books higher than $140 million. So that was the result of over a 17% return on the stock market. And so, good news. Usually I have to come up here, I've had to come up here in the past and tell you we didn't do so great, so it's nice this year to tell you we did good. Our retirement boards have to be fully funded by mandate in fiscal 2040. January 1st, 2017, the funding schedule presumes the fiscal appropriation to be a little over $12 million. We assume a 5.5% increase each year on the appropriation and assume a 7.25% return net of fees. With those two factors, we currently are on board to be fully funded by fiscal 2036, four years ahead of the mandate, which gives us some wiggle room if, God forbid, another 2008 or something like that happens. The 5.5% increase was negotiated by myself, the chairman, town manager, and representative of the Finance Committee, with the, also the agreement that if an override goes through, we would go up to 6% and hopefully try to get this off the books. The total funding schedule calls for $12.3 million. You wouldn't see that because 3.5% is paid by the Arlington Housing Authority, which has about 20 employees and 12 retirees and is obligated to also make a contribution. The Arlington Retirement Board's monthly payroll is $1.5 million to our 600 retirees and survivors, which comes to $18 million a year. We have an operating budget of $1.3 million, with about $800,000 going directly to the state for fees and investments. So what does that mean? We get, the board receives about $3.7 million in deductions from the active employees currently, $12.3 million in an appropriation. So to summarize, we have $19.3 million in requirements, budget and payroll. We have $16 million in receipts between the 3.7 and the 12.3 in appropriation. We start the year with the structural $3.3 million cash flow deficit. So just on a quick note, if you have $160 million, the first 2% or so, or 2.5% of your returns is just to break even. So even if you see returns this year of zero, that means we lost. We need to get at least 2.5% to break even. Some information about the employees. Any employee who started after July 1st of 1996 pays about 11%. Anyone who started between January of '84 and June of '96 pays about 10%. Anybody prior to that pays 7 plus 2 or 9%. One of the misnomers I always hear when people call me, I do get calls from people in the community asking about the retirement board and so forth. What is regular compensation? Regular compensation is mandated by the state on what we can accept as regular compensation. It's paid to the employees, including longevity, certain types of stipends, salary increases earned because of different licenses. So if you're in the DPW and you get a heavy lifting license or something like that, part of the job, you may get more money, that's regular compensation. Where a lot of the misnomers are, are, oop, sorry, behind us. Okay, sorry about that. What is not included, which people find surprising, when you see what people make in the town, I don't see that. I only see what's in the regular compensation. The regular compensation does not include overtime, housing, car allowances, mileage allowances, tool allowance, and clothing allowance that some employees receive as part of their job, and sick and vacation buyouts. So when you hear the stories about people getting all this money when they buy out the state or vacation time, none of that is included in their retirement. I have no idea what those numbers are, I don't ever see them. So also a reminder, municipal employees do not pay into Social Security, so unless you had 30 years of substantial earnings, you get a reduced Social Security. No municipality in Massachusetts pays into Social Security. The Arlington Retirement Board acts autonomously, and it managed, what we, what the retirement fund pays for is, we do the in-house payroll, it's not done with the town, it's done in our software and our office for the 600 retirees. The staff salaries are paid, stipend to board members, the town portion of the health insurance, which means myself and my assistant pay our portion, and the retirement board picks up the management portion and reimburses the town. Software costs, office rent, lease of equipment, postage, actuarial studies, and investment fees are what comes out of the retirement fund. The oversight agency, if any of you are interested in looking, is called PERAC, the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission. On the town website, under the retirement board, we have a link to their website. Anything that we have to submit is put on their website, audits, actuarial studies. There's also a report that comes out at the end of May that tells how boards did with returns and investments and so forth. So it's a good website if you're interested in it. We also have a link to the state pension fund, where 95% of our assets are invested. It is mapensions.com. It is a link to the PRIM board, which is the Pension Reserve Investment Management Board. They are the board that oversees the investments per the legislature, if you're added to a certain amount of funding, which we are not, so we are in there. They invest the money in the PRT fund. People get confused with PRIM and PRT. PRT is the Pension Reserve Investment Trust, where the money actually is. And again, if you're interested, you can take a look at their website. And as always, you can contact my office, 781-316-3370, or reach me at richgreco@town. Arlington. ma.us. And our office is located at 27 Maple Street, Suite G11, centrally located, the door between the men's and ladies' room.[1352.58][1352.58](Laughter). The other thing that's not up here that the retirement board also does is, we are, also oversee the investments of the OPEB fund, which is the other post-employment benefits. Currently, that fund has $13 million in it. It received a 16% return last year on its money. The money is still in the town, it's just where it's invested, through an active town meeting in 2005, the retirement board oversees that. So again, any of you that have questions about retirement, I know it's, a lot of you don't deal with on a daily basis, feel free to contact us and hopefully we can answer your questions. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope this was informative.
Thank you, Mr. Greco.[1395.04][1395.04](Applause). Any other committee reports?
Mr. Moderator, my name's Charles Kalouskas, co-chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
And I'm Joe Varr, the other co-chair of the committee.
I move that the report of the Master Plan Implementation Committee be received.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? It's so received.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe and I will briefly summarize the highlights of the annual report that's available to all of you. And what we want to do is thank two of the town meeting members who served on this committee with us, Ann Leroyer and Peter Howard. Their advice and input in the process of making sure that some of the 94 recommendations contained in the town master plan has been a real benefit for us. The Arlington Master Plan, named your town, your future, was adopted by the town in 2015. The town then appointed our committee to oversee the implementation of a number of the elements of the master plan. Joe and I, this evening, were going to summarize the progress made during the past year on the seven major elements of the master plan, those being land use, housing, public facilities, traffic circulation, economic development, historic and cultural resources, and natural resource, and open space planning. As far as land use, a zoning recodification working group was formed in 2016 and worked closely with the Department of Planning and Community Development and a consultant to recodify the town zoning bylaw. It was written in 1975 and updated by town meeting throughout the years. After receiving extensive input from the public review process, a new zoning bylaw was approved at a special town meeting in, early in 2018. Since town meeting approved adding mixed-use development in the town's existing business districts with some incentive for higher-valued mixed-use redevelopment projects along Massachusetts Avenue, Broadway, and Summer Street, three redevelopment projects have added approximately 4,300 square feet of commercial space and 14 residential units. And the last in land use is the reorganization consolidation of the six existing business districts and an update of the town's signed bylaw with assistance of a consultant is planned for in 2018, 2019. As far as housing and residential development, this town has secured a planning assistance grant from the state to advance the housing production plan, which will increase housing diversity and affordability in town. This project will assist in developing strategies to support multifamily housing in select locations through proposed zoning amendments at a future town meeting. The residential study group that was formed in 2016 developed several town meeting warrant articles regarding new construction in residential neighborhoods, including Residential Construction Control Agreement, and that was approved by town meeting in 2017. In 2018, 2019, one of the group's priorities will be to explore the ZIDE guidelines for new residential construction in single and two-family residential districts. And late-breaking news is there will be a town-wide housing forum on May 24th. Details will be posted soon on the town website. And public facilities and services, feasibility study for multipurpose senior center, the central school has been completed, capital funds have been used to retain an orange project manager and design team for the building renovation project, and the town's capital plan has funding for project construction for fiscal year 2020. Joe?
Thanks. So I'm gonna cover the other four elements of the master plan, starting with traffic and circulation. The town is pursuing a very exciting project to implement Bus Rapid Transit, or BRT, on Massachusetts Avenue from Arlington Center, more or less down to the Cambridge Line, and that's using a $100,000 grant the town was able to receive very competitively from the Bar Foundation, and I'm always forced at this point to note that I am not related to the Bar Foundation despite sharing the name. So that's a very exciting project, and there is gonna be a public meeting in this, right here in Town Hall on May 16th at 7:00 P.M. So I encourage anyone who's interested in that project to attend that. In addition, the town has been participating in a RFP, Requested Proposals, with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission to bring Bike Share, which currently exists in Cambridge, Somerville, Boston, and Brookline, to Arlington, as well as several other of the surrounding towns. And we expect that that initiative will launch with Dockless Bike Share over the summer of this year. So that's a very, another exciting transportation aspect of this. In terms of economic development, the, I think probably the main thing to mention is that the town received a technical assistance grant also from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to do a study of economic development in Arlington Heights. And you know, we've, in the master plan, we identified several areas for focused economic development, and Arlington Heights was one of those. So this will really be able to help look at in more detail what the options are, what the possibilities are there to improve the mixed-use development in that area. And again, there'll be a meeting of that, related to that study, where MIPC will present some of the initial results of that on May 23rd at the Allen School in the cafeteria, really focused on a retail market study that they've completed that sort of addresses how, what types of opportunities exist for, particularly for retail development in Arlington Heights. In terms of historical and cultural In terms of historical and cultural resources, there's been a lot of activity in that area, particularly in terms of, on the Arts and Culture Action Plan that was developed in two thousand and seventeen and led to the sort of strengthening of the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture, and is now focused on kind of developing the Arlington Cultural District that was also designated in two thousand and seventeen. So I think this has been an area where there's been a lot of interest in the community, and I think the master plan has really allowed us to focus on some actions that can bear real fruit in the short term, as I mentioned. And then in terms of natural resources and open space, I think one of the main initiatives there has been looking at the Mill Brook Corridor, which runs really the length of the town, sort of like the Minuteman Bike Path, and there's been a number of meetings of a study group related to that, trying to look at segment by segment, how can we make that resource more accessible to town residents and make it more focused also of economic development. And the Mystic River Watershed Association received grant funding through the Community Preservation Act from Arlington to do a study that's currently underway, looking at environmental assessment of the brook, as well as some designs for how to make it more attractive and more accessible for everyone who lives and works here. So, again, those are some of the main highlights of what we've been working on over the last year. We're going to continue, obviously, working going forward on a number of these initiatives, particularly on the zoning front, now that the recodification is complete, looking at more substantive changes to zoning going forward, and so that, I'm sure, will result in some additional interaction with town meeting, but we don't know quite what those are yet, so that's more, more to come. I guess I'll just close by, again, thanking both the town meeting members who serve with Charlie and me on the committee, but also all the town meeting members, many of you have volunteered for subgroups or working groups that have come out of the master plan and have helped us to work through the implementation of it, so we thank all of you for that. There's been a ton of volunteers who've worked on this with us, both on town meeting and beyond that, to make these projects a reality, and one of the other things I wanted to really highlight, as you may have heard in some of the things I mentioned, that we really have sought out funding, not just from the town budget, but also from foundations, from the state, from other groups, to help make this real. So, you know, a number of the initiatives that we're pursuing at this point have funding that's coming from external sources and really leveraging the time and money that we've spent so far. So with that, I will close, and thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other reports? Seeing none. Mr. Tosti?
I move that Article Three be laid upon the table.
All in favor of laying Article Three upon the table? Please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, Article Three is on the table.
Last meeting, I said that we were going to be doing the capital budget first, so we have time to do that, and then on Monday, we do Minuteman and the whole budget, so we can put things together. So in that sense, I move that Articles nineteen through twenty-nine be laid on the table so we could take up Article Thirty.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, we now have Article Thirty, the capital budget, in front of us. Mr. Foskett?
Charlie Foskett, Precinct Eight, and Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. First slide. Thank you. So, if we can have the second slide?
Mr. Foskett, are you going to require additional time?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. So, first of all, I'd like to introduce the members of the Capital Planning Committee. Brian Rarig is our vice chairman, John DeNizio, if you could stand up, please, is a school department designee, Dean Carmen, the treasurer, Sandy Poole, town manager designee, Steve Andrew, a citizen appointee, Chris Moore, new appointee this year, town meeting member, Barbara Thornton, town meeting member and citizen appointee, Timur Yontor and Joe Barr, both advisors this year, Michael Morse, deputy treasurer, and Amy Fidalgo, the town management analyst, all of which worked very diligently and hard on capital project, capital planning this year. I'd like to thank the town meeting for supporting Article Six earlier in this town meeting for the expansion of the Capital Planning Committee, and I'd like to congratulate Chris on joining the committee this year. I'd also like to say that Amy Fidalgo and Sandy Poole have provided unbelievably active and professional and extraordinary support to the Capital Planning Committee, and we appreciate it. And Timur Yontor and Joe Barr volunteered to serve as advisors this year, and we have benefited from their participation and advice. And I'd also like to say that Brian Rarig and Chris Moore ensured the completeness and the accuracy of the CPC report, which is this yellow book that was on your seats and is also on the back of the room. Next slide, please. Just, since we are going to deal within seven minutes here, just to note that there, in this year's capital budget, which is the first year of the five-year plan, there are roughly seventy-four items. There are about eight hundred individual items in the five-year plan, six tables, six figures, six exhibits, nineteen sections, and we have to cover it all in seven minutes, so we're only going to touch on the highlights. On the slide, you see a pie chart, which shows that this year, we're going to have, we are asking to spend a total of eleven million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand and twenty-seven dollars. It's split over twenty-four percent direct cash expenditures from this year's, from the fiscal year's nineteen's tax collections, about five point two seven five million in new bonds. By the way, one point three million of that bonding amount was voted at the special town meeting in February, but it's included in the five-year capital plan. And about three point six million funded by other sources of funding, such as water and sewer, federal and state grants, et cetera, non-direct tax sources. Next slide, please. Just, I noticed there are a number of new town meeting members this year, so I'd just like to make a couple of comments about things, about nomenclature and terms of art that we use in the capital planning process. There are two types of funding coming from our tax base. One is exempt, and that's funding that's outside the limit of Proposition Two and a Half and is directly approved by the voters, either in a debt exclusion or an override. Then the other is non-exempt, that's what town meeting approves in the budgets, and it's paid for by the taxes out of the current year, and it's within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half, which says that the tax base can only go up each year by two and a half percent at a maximum, and plus, plus any new growth. That's a very simple summary of it. With respect to the non-exempt capital budget, we refer to several different sources of funding, I just made reference to them, some of them a second ago. One is cash, that's money that's raised in the current fiscal year, and the town goes out and purchases something, just like you would go purchase something in a store. The other is bonds, which is borrowing, where the town will purchase something, borrow the money to purchase it or invest in it, and pay that back over multiple years, over different town meeting appropriations. And then the third category is the other category, grants, fees, et cetera, non-tax revenue that the town collects. And then the final category, which will be addressed in a later article, are CPA funds, which derive from a surcharge on the taxes every year and is a form of exempt spending. Next slide, please. So, of all those items that I just mentioned in the capital report, I would just like to draw your attention to some big items. The first is, in two thousand and twenty, as a previous speaker mentioned, we have earmarked four million dollars for the improvement of the senior center. It's a non-exempt funded item. It's in the preliminary design stage, that's a code word to say that the amount might go up next year. Similarly, in currently, in the design and analysis stages, the DPW facility and campus renovation. This is an area of the town infrastructure that definitely needs a lot of work. We're anticipating that the project will cost more than twenty million dollars. It's going to, we intend to have it funded by both non-exempt taxes and funds from the Water and Sewer Fund, Enterprise Fund, principally because the water and sewer activity, or the activities of the Water and Sewer Enterprise, use a major part of the, of the facility. The reservoir, Hardy School, and the Arlington High School is the mother of all expenditures, and that's going to be affecting a lot of the future. Just quickly, the next slide shows the direction that town debt will likely go, and this is in your report, and you will see that the, even though we are increasing the town debt in the future years, we're still within the legal debt limit capacity that is authorized by the state. And finally, on the last slide, there's a series of detailed tables that demonstrate that we stay within the five percent limit that the town capital, the capital planning process has followed over the years. So we'd like your support on Article Thirty, on Article Thirty-One, the rescinding of the authorized but unissued debt, and on Article Three, Article Thirty-Three, the appropriation of water and sewer reconstruction debt provided on an interest-free basis by the MWRA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Leonard, Precinct Seventeen. Mr. Moderator, page four of five, under Exhibit Five, there is a notation there for artisan music room upgrade, that I believe it's stating, last year, we appropriated ten thousand dollars. If you turn to the next page, page five of five, there's the artisan music room upgrade study with an appropriation of this year for sixty thousand dollars. So I guess my point is, we made an upgrade in the music room, and now we're looking at sixty thousand dollars to do a study for an upgrade in the music room?
Mr. Foskett, you see what he's referring to?
Capital spending, three-year history.
Exhibit Five, on the back of the book. Page four of five, music room upgrade, ten thousand, twenty eighteen. And next year, we're going to study it, sixty thousand dollars.
Brian Rarig, Precinct Eight, and vice chair of the Capital Planning Committee. Mr. Moderator, the descriptions of those two items are reversed.
Ah, so in twenty eighteen, we did a study, and this year, we're doing the upgrade?
Correct.
So, okay.
Study happened first.
So ten grand for the study, sixty for the upgrade. Does that answer your question, Mr. Leonard?
I believe so, Mr. Moderator. I have one other question, on page one of five, on Exhibit Five, under Facilities, Town Hall renovations, we appropriated a hundred thousand last year, we're appropriating another hundred thousand this year. What I'm unclear about is most of the categories that are listed on all the other subjects tell us where the money really is going. Could we be informed as to what kind of renovations are going on in the Town Hall that we're going to be spending two hundred thousand dollars on?
Mr. Chapter Lane, how are you spending this two hundred thousand?
Adam Chapter Lane, Town Manager. So the agreement between the town and the Capital Planning Committee for a number of years has been to fund, instead of in one large project for the renovation of Town Hall, fund an amount of a hundred thousand dollars a year to make renovations over time. So most recently, those allocations have gone towards a boiler replacement, which was actually just recently committed, completed, and then the next renovation planned is a relaying, sort of a flattening and repair of all of the granite stones out front in Town Hall to eliminate or alleviate the tripping hazard that's, that's present in the front of Town Hall. So we have, we have a schedule of year-over-year improvements that we would like to accomplish, and those are the two big ones we have on the list right now.
How many years moving forward will we be seeing a hundred thousand dollars a year? In other words, is it, after two thousand and nineteen, are we going to be looking at a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty and continue on?
Yeah, I think we programmed it to go to the end of this existing capital plan, but the plan is not.
I think I can answer that, I think we will be spending roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year on Town Hall.
Okay. My last favor then, Mr. Moderator, is when we do something like Town Hall renovations, is there any way that we could roughly join the rest of the group by putting in what we're actually spending the money on? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll suggest that to the committee. Mr. Trembley?
Mr. Trembley, Precinct Nineteen. Mr. Moderator, I'm just curious about one thing on the nineteen, two thousand and nineteen capital budget, I think under the fire department, it said they were going to buy a new three-quarter ton pickup truck for fifty-five thousand dollars, and then the DPW is going to buy a new four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton pickup truck for forty thousand dollars. I'm just curious why.
Red paint costs more money.
Is that?
Red paint costs more money. You want to know the difference between the two trucks?
Yeah.
Can someone tell us that? I know Chief Jefferson, I don't see him, so he could tell us what that is, but Mr. Rodham might be able to tell us kind of truck he's getting for forty grand.
Michael Rodamacher, Director of Public Works. I'm sorry, the truck you're referencing is a three-quarter ton pickup?
Yeah, so under here, you're going to buy a three-quarter ton, four-wheel-drive pickup truck with a plow for forty thousand dollars?
Sure, that's basically what it is. It's a pickup truck with a plow.
No, I get, I get that, and that's, that sounds right. I'm just curious why, why the fire department's cost fifteen thousand dollars more than yours?
I don't know, they may have specialized equipment in the truck bed for fire and rescue. I can't ask a question, but that would be my guess.
Okay. And then the other question I have is for the Health and Human Services, they're buying an oil truck prover trailer for thirty-four thousand dollars, and I'm just curious how many oil trucks are in town that they have, that they check, and do they check them every year? I don't, I don't even know.
Mr. Banjono?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christine Bonjono, Director of Health and Human Services. Arlington seals trucks for both Arlington, Belmont, and also does some trucks for Lexington, and in total, there are about forty trucks that are sealed annually, and if a seal breaks, they have to reseal it.
So that's once a year, you seal them?
Correct.
Okay, and she actually answered my question, because I was going to ask why we don't share with other towns, but we do, so that's great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct Twelve. To follow up on an earlier comment, first, I hope that when we are appropriating funds to maintain the Town Hall, that the revolving funds that relate to Town Hall can be used whenever, whenever possible to help with that maintenance. I have a question on page three, the ambulance, from the ambulance revolving fund, the amount appropriated this year has dropped by two-thirds. Is that because we're, we just? Is that because we're, we just purchased a new ambulance and the other one got sold or something? Instead of $50,000, it's $15,000?
Mr. Rarick.
Brian Rarick, Precinct 8. Well, Gordon, you found my mistake. The ambulance fund is undercharged in this year's capital budget.
Yes.
For, a formula broke in the spreadsheet, and it failed to pick up the amortization of one of the bonds for an ambulance. That doesn't change anything substantive about either the plan or the ambulance fund. It only means that next year, we'll catch up on having the ambulance fund reimburse the plan for that.
So I won't ask why it suddenly so much higher?
Amortization. That's right. You can ask that next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will make my sort of semi-annual comment about the fact that since we've had the CPA, a lot of the CPA funds are going for our playgrounds and a lot less from the capital plan, and as I've said before, I'd hoped that the addition of the CPA would accentuate our playground renovations. I'm very happy that after many, many years, that the second half of the Robbins Farm project is growing new grass. It looks very nice and will be a great benefit to both the school and Precinct 12 and the rest of the town. I corresponded with the manager and the deputy town manager, and I suggested something that they promised in the future, that's being developed now, is in the, in our, one of our reports, I think maybe the capital planning report, there's a, there's a listing of all our buildings and when they were last upgraded or scheduled to be upgraded, and I suggested that would be very helpful for the, for the members if we had a similar listing of our playgrounds and facilities like that, and when they were last upgraded, so we could see how we're doing on, on that maintenance. I also contacted the deputy town manager, this, I don't know whether this is the right place for it, but he mentioned that they were prepared, if they had time today, to tell us something about the SIMS money and how that's being processed, because we don't really hear much about that anymore.
Mr.
We're paying bonds still on the SIMS, I think, so it's.
Well, it's a little far field from capital budget, but we hit them, Mr. Poole, shortly, briefly.
A draft has been prepared for review by the selectmen, which they will review at their Monday night meeting, so it can be delivered to town meeting next week.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When I first became a member of the meeting, we spent many, many hours each time, each, each, each meeting discussing the SIMS project and how to pay back the bond for buying the land on top of the hill, which is now condos and apartments. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher.
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6, right next to Spypon Field. Are there plans to do anything with the concrete stadium bleachers and anything else with the Spypon Playground across from the Boys and Girls Club?
That has been discussed. It's a complicated process, and there's nothing, no pun intended, concrete in the plan. The issue has to do with it being historical as well as recreational.
Well, that would be confusing, I guess.
Gentlemen, right here, Ben Yerney, next. David Watson, Precinct 5. Got a question on Exhibit 1, which is on, it's labeled page 1 of 2, but it's page 14 of the report. Under Community Safety, Police Services, it indicates that we are using bond funding in the amount of $375,000 for a radio upgrade replacement program. Now, that sounds very mission-critical, and I'm wondering whether there was any effort made to get state or federal grant funding for that, and, and whether there's any possibility of obtaining grant funding rather than bonding it. Chief Ryan, thank you.
Thank you, Frederick Ryan, Chief of Police. Mr. Moderator, short answer is yes. Right now, we've retained, using alternative funding sources, we've retained an engineer to help us look at what's known as Next Generation 911, and there's another federal program that's, the acronym is escaping me right now, but short answer is yes, and as we get closer to implementation of that program, we'll also work with State 911 to see if we can get additional funds from them, of which we recently got because we're taking our wireless calls now through our 911 call center. So we are getting additional grant funds from State 911.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Menman.
Serena Moon, Precinct 21. My question, Mr. Moderator, is on the last page, page 1 of 2, actually, I'm looking at the table for the new non-exempt debt services, and I see the first column is the title of all the areas, what the need is, the second column, and third column has all these numbers, 10, 27, 5. I have no idea what they mean.
Oh, I see that. What's the column heading on that, do you know?
It's the lifetime of the, lifetime of the debt that's financing the purchases.
I was suspecting that, but I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Sir?
John Ellis, Precinct 3. I have a quick question on tree planting in capital programs. There was a capital program run by the Rec Department a couple of years ago to plant, to redo the tennis courts. They planted some trees, they had a one-year warranty from the contractor to keep those trees alive. The trees were not watered, and they're, they're not particularly healthy. Some of them are more healthy than others. There was a capital project several years ago at the Thompson School that planted trees. Those trees were not watered and died. So we have new trees at the Thompson School, we have new trees, the Rec Department's planted at Magnolia Field. We have contractors offering one-year warranties, which don't actually come with watering, and I believe the DPW is often placed in a position of sort of a last-minute phone call and panic that the trees are half-dead, can somebody take care of it? So my question to either the town manager or the Capital Planning Committee is, in future projects, do we have a strategy in place that will allow for trees to be watered if the contractors fail to do so?
Mr. Chapdeline.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. I suppose the best answer I can give to you tonight on that question is, we're discussing it and working on it. We, to do so, to have a plan ready, we would need an increase in the operating budget that's not proposed this year. Staff, especially Tree Division staff, their time is dedicated to not just tree pruning and maintenance, but as you know, in the spring and fall, tree planting and watering of the trees that we plant in-house. So adding additional watering duties associated with capital projects would be challenging without the identification of some additional resources. What you said is completely accurate. The historical process or approach has been to make sure we have warranties for the trees so that the contractor owns whether or not the tree survives, but I think it's also accurate where you said that the contractors will just come and plant a new tree, as opposed to watering it over the course of the year. So I think we have to develop a way to, to improve what you've described so that we don't just sort of get into this endless cycle of planting a tree and having it replaced when they don't survive.
Great. Thank you. Have you hand up? Yes.
Dave Levy, Precinct 18. Is, Mr. Moderator, is it appropriate to ask what the projected property tax increases might be, starting in 2019 as a possible override, to fund both the debt service and the operating deficits as part of this capital plan?
As part of the capital plan? Can you project?
Well, because the capital plan has obligated debt service that goes into this five years, which shows a big operating deficit in fiscal '22 and fiscal '23, so is it appropriate to ask what kind of prop tax increases might be required in fiscal year 2019 to mitigate all of that?
Mr. Chapdeline, do you have an answer for that?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Hard question to give you exact numbers tonight, but I think it's an important question to answer. So if the, to break it out into the high school project and then into the operating override, or potential operating override, for the high school project, a lot of it is going to depend on what the actual project cost is, and then what the actual effective reimbursement rate is from the MSBA rate. And what I mean by that is, right now, the MSBA's reimbursement rate for our feasibility study costs is 45.11%. Ultimately, as we go into a project, there's a number of costs associated with a school construction project that are not reimbursable by the MSBA. So even though they reimburse you at 45%, your effective reimbursement rate often is much lower than that. So we, we don't know what our effective reimbursement rate will be, because we don't know exactly what we're going to build and what costs won't be reimbursable. But to be very conservative, there have been public numbers that have been shared at some of the high school building committee forums, of the potential of this project approaching a $300 million budget, and if we assume a 35%, 35% effective reimbursement rate, that would make the annual taxpayer impact on the average single-family home approximately $760 for the high school project.
Per year?
Now, again, that's, that's, you know, that's based on a home that's valued at $655,000. That's what that number is based on. The operating override answer is a little more complicated, because there's still a lot of planning and processing and consideration on the part of the Board of Selectment and the Long Range Planning Committee about what exactly a potential operating override could look like. And what I mean by that is both the amount, and then based on that amount, how many years it would last. So there are decisions to be made about whether or not the town should pursue a three, four, or five-year operating override. The longer it goes, the bigger the number is, and then obviously, the bigger the number is, the bigger the taxpayer impact would be. We shared some updated projections with the Long Range Planning Committee, actually, earlier this week. So if in calendar year 2019, to go into effect in fiscal year 20, there was an operating override that would last three years, it would need to be in the amount of $4.5 million, and that would cost the average single-family tax bill $305. If you extended that to four years, that would increase the total number of the override to 7.8, and that would cost the average single-family taxpayer $529. And if you extended that to five years, that would increase the total amount of the override to $10.4 million, and the average single-family tax impact to $705. Again, a lot of decisions and discussions to be had before any of that happens, but I think that, that provides a fairly accurate, rough sketch of what we're looking at.
Okay. And then a question back to the Capital Planning Committee. Is it codified in law where the 5% of revenue comes from? Is that a, is that like in the town code that we must spend 5%? Or does debt service have to equal 5%?
No, it's a town practice, since the Capital Planning Committee was formed in 1986, between a, an agreement between the Capital Planning Committee and the then-chairman of the Finance Committee, Bob O'Neill.
Okay, thank you. So my only comment to all of us, can everyone hear me? Okay. So my only comment to town management? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. So my only, my only comment back is, is look, since 1986, we have not built a brand-new high school, and it's going to cost projected $300 million, and you just heard the property tax increases. Now, some of us can afford it, and some of us cannot, and I think as stewards of the town, I would ask that the town management and the Capital Planning Committee think hard about the 5%, potentially drop that number in the next few years, so that we can make things truly affordable for ourselves and our neighbors. That's my only ask. So I'll, I'll give my time back.
Mr. McCabe?
I stand to terminate debate on Article 30 and all matters before it.
We have motion to terminate debate on Article 30 and all matters before us. All in favor, please press 1 when we get the green light. Motion to terminate debate, please press 1 to terminate, press 2 to continue discussing the capital budget. His vote, 170 affirmative, 28 in the negative. It is a two-third vote. Debate is terminated. That brings us to the actual votes. We have before us the recommended vote of the Capital Planning Committees. You'll notice there are eight different parts to this vote. We're going to vote them all as one. One vote on all eight parts. The first vote is for $12,800 and some odd thousand, and then they go down from there. Vote number 2, vote number 3, and then there's the parts 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. So we're going to take one vote on all eight parts of the capital budget. So we're going to use our clickers, because there's bonding involved, it requires a two-third vote. So Mr. Lathwood, when you're ready. All in favor of the capital budget as presented, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. It's an affirmative vote, 207 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative. That's a vote, and I so declare it, and that closes Article 30. That brings us to, we're going to actually jump to do the capital planning, the community preservation, so Mr. Tosti.
I move that Article 31 through 38 be laid upon the table, so we can bring up the Community Preservation Fund.
All in favor of laying Articles 31 through 38 on the table, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? It's affirmative vote, and I so declare it. That brings us to Article 39, Community Preservation Fund. Mr. Helmoth.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Helmoth, Precinct 12, and Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So first, I'd like to quickly introduce and thank the members and staff of the, of the committee. Our wonderful Vice Chair, Andrew Bengson, and I believe not-President Eugene Benson, Leslie Mayer, Town Meeting Member in the back, Richard Murray, Joanne Robinson, Chuck Torone, and Ann Woodward, and Jim Feeney, Assistant Town Manager, and this is Amy Fidalgo's Knight, to be thanked, Amy Fidalgo from the, our Management Budget Analyst, both of whom are indispensable in our work as well. So thank you. It's a, it's an arduous seven-month process to vet these projects that come before us, and then to manage all the projects that are in the tank over the course of the year, and so we appreciate their, their effort very much. Also with us tonight and available to answer your questions about any of the projects are this team, but in addition, we have our Director of Recreation, John Marshall, who is available to answer any questions you have about the reservoir project. And we have a gentleman, Dermot Windeger, from Old Swamp Mill, and George Parsons from Arlington Historical Society, who can answer questions about the Jason Russell House. And just want to say thank you to both of them for, for your work in preserving these historical resources in our town. So CPA, as you know, I think by now, covers three areas of projects. These are dedicated reserved funds coming from our tax surcharge and from the state match, in these three areas of historic preservation, community housing or affordable housing, and open space and recreation. And every year, we are required by state law, and by we, I mean you, this town meeting, to spend or reserve at least 10% of the expected CPA revenues into each of the categories. Once we do that, the rest of the funds are flexible. The little grace lever on the screen illustrates the, the small percentage that the, that you are allowed to award to, or appropriate to the committee for operating expenses, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. It's been about, we actually used about 2.5%, but we can request and use up. It's been about, we actually used about 2.5 percent, but we can request and use up to 5 percent. I know that this is too small to see on the screen, but the good news is, there's a copy in your report of the budget. I'm sure you've all read it and digested it by now. So, you know, the, the bottom line is that we have revenues coming in from the two sources I mentioned. We have a fund balance, which is the savings that you have put in. The unrestricted fund balance is CPA revenues that, at our recommendation, in prior years, you decided to save instead of spend, and to save for future projects. And tonight, you're going to get to spend some of it, at least if, if you do what we are asking you to do. The expenditures and reserves are pretty straightforward. We have our projects, which I'll talk about very shortly, and the administrative expenses account. So as I mentioned, we can ask for up to 5 percent. Every year, we've made a practice of asking for the maximum 5 percent, and we explain this in our report. We haven't used it. Our, our history, track record so far is, we've used about half of it or less every year. And then when we don't use that whole balance, that whole fund every year, the end of the fiscal year, it just rolls back to the CPA fund for projects. So there's a safety valve there. We use that primarily for salary offsets for the two individuals I just thanked, and that's part of, goes into part of relief on the operating budget, because they do devote their time to the committee. We have some smaller expenses as well. But we'd like to have the full 5 percent in case there are operating costs to the program that come up during the year, and that we'd really rather not ding the town's operating budget for, if we don't have to. So in your report, sorry, there are three groups of votes. The moderator has indicated that he'll just take these all together, as we just did with capital. But just so you are clear what we're doing, the first three votes are, or the first vote is just accounting transfers. I mentioned the 10 percent earlier that we're required to, to reserve for each of the categories. The first group takes care of that, and then we have our projects, and then we have the administrative expenses. Now for the fun part, a quick tour through the projects. This is a map of the recommended projects this year. If you look in our online edition, that's available at the URL, in the front of your report, we have another map that shows all the projects in another color, and it's just sprinkled throughout the town, and that's really important to us. So I'll just hit these very briefly. You can ask us questions, if you have specific, specific questions. The Hardy Elementary School, as you know, is being renovated. One of the consequences of that renovation is that we're losing playground space from the expansion, and enrollment's going up. So there's going to be more kids and less playground space, and we need a new playground anyway. So they, the parents and the schools asked for CPA funds to do a really in-depth study to produce creative solutions for the best use of that space for the new playground that is in the capital plan to be built. Durez, this was just mentioned in the previous report, in the previous article. The focus of this, this phase of the, of the reservoir, the first phase, is taking care of the pump and filtration equipment that cleans the water in the beach, which produces a lot of revenue for the town. We need to get through one more season of this really cranky equipment, but then after that, we're hoping with this, with this to replace it. One of the benefits of this is that we'll be moving towards a UV filtration predominant system instead of all chlorine, so that'll have some real benefits to that. And we're also doing a pilot, just a small stretch of trail, to, to try out some trail improvements that will inform later phases of the project around the, around the perimeter. Millbrook, I got to go quickly here. Millbrook is Phase 2 of a study that was also mentioned, and has, will develop firm construction documents for, to make it possible to seek grants for the ecological and water quality, and also other grants, and put together a capital plan for actual improvements to the Millbrook Edge at Wellington Park. The Jason Russell House restoration is the next phase of the stabilization and repairs to the foundation and to some of the electrical systems to keep that valuable resource with us for the long term. Likewise, the Old Swamp Mill is asking for some funds to do preservation on the windows and on the other envelope aspects to also maintain the stability and longevity of that resource. And finally, we are pleased to recommend additional support for the Housing Corporation of Arlington's project that spans a number of locations in town and will add 48 units to our affordable housing inventory. Welcome your questions.
Ms. LaCorte?
Annie LaCorte, Precinct 15. I have a question and a comment. The question is, first, a scope question. Mr. Moderator, would it be appropriate this time to ask someone to point out where in the Finance Committee report people can find the CPA salary offsets that Eric mentioned for administrative costs?
Can you answer that?
I know, I know the amounts. You happen to have it?
Oh, you got them?
Perhaps Ms. LaCorte would like to read them to us.
I think Mr. Chapdeline can show you exactly who they are.
Maybe Mr. Chapdeline would like to do this.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. There, in Budget Number 3, the Town Manager's Budget, offsetting the salaries of both Amy Fidalgo and Jim Feeney, who were mentioned earlier. It's labeled as CPA offsets.
Thank you. I just feel like, for transparency's sake, folks might want to know where that's resting before we do this vote. My comment is just to say that, after years of sitting on the Board of Selectmen and distributing CDBG funds, one of the great things that you should know is happening with the available CPA funds, is that we have vastly increased, increased the amount of money that the town of Arlington is able to invest in affordable housing projects. So it has been a huge benefit that, particularly with the increase in housing costs that we're seeing, is, I think, really important to maintaining the character of the town. And I appreciate the CPA's Committee's investment in affordable housing for Arlington. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8. The, another thing that's good about the CPA is the amount of money that's available for historic preservation. And I know the Jason Russell House, Arlington Historical Society, he's got a nice slice of that, much, much needed. I used to be the president and later the treasurer of that organization, and, and we don't have as much money as the town does to spend on keeping that resource, which is a resource for the entire community. And same thing applies, of course, to the, the Old Swamp Mill. But one of the, another project, which I gather is under the historic preservation sector, is Whittamore Park, which is the little space of green in front of the Jefferson Cutter House, and the railroad tracks, which is the last remnant of the pioneering railroad that the people of West Cambridge, now Arlington, at, joining with the people of Lexington, built back in 1845. And they don't have any tracks left in Lexington, they have the station, but, but no tracks. And, but there is a plot afoot, and I've read about it in the Arlington Advocate, to remove the tracks, because somebody thinks it would be nicer just to have grass there. And I would point out that these funds are for historic preservation, and to use them, or any part of them, to destroy an historical artifact would be an, an abomination and a drastic misuse of the funds that have been appropriated for historic preservation. So I hope that whoever has those plans will give them up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Revellak? We're not the English Parliament. We don't need a clap.
Steve Revellak, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, I had just a question about the state matching funds. The CPA budget for FY 2019 lists state matching funds at $159,000 and change. I'm just wondering how this compares with previous years, and what kind of funding we could expect in future years?
Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Eric Helmoth, CPAC Chair. So the matching funds are lower this year. The match that we're projecting for this year is 11.5 percent, based on FY '18 receipts, projected receipts. Prior year, I believe it was closer to 19 percent, 17, and our first year, Jim, was, was 20, yeah. So it's definitely going down, and this is no surprise. It's a structural deficit or, or a problem built in to the formula. There are strong efforts going on right now with the CPA statewide coalition, and we had a very near miss with the House just this past week, where half of the House of Representatives cosponsored an amendment that would have increased the registry of these feeds, fees that feed this state match fund, and restored us all to about a 30 percent match. That's off the table for the moment, maybe for procedural reasons, there is still hope. We know that the Senate is very supportive of this, so that's a fix that we're, that we're hoping to get through, because with Boston coming online, we think that, that we've been advised that the, the matching funds next year will very likely be in the upper single digits. So, you know, we go down a little bit more.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Sir?
Somebody left their cellphone up here. I'm looking at the FY 2019 CPA budget, looking at the historic preservation column, and it adds up to a total expenditures of 8 percent, and I thought, in the presentation and everything I understood about CPA, that there was a 10 percent set aside for each of those three different areas. I was just wondering why it only added up to 8 percent and not 10 percent.
Mr. Helmoth?
Eric Helmoth, CPAC Chair, thank you. We like it when people pay attention. There's a footnote there, footnote 2, that explained that the, these figures are, are, nope, sorry, footnote 1. Yeah, there's a problem with my footnote. Andrew, do you remember, there is a reason for this, and I'm blanking on, on what the... Oh, yeah, sorry. So it's a, yeah, it's a percent of this coming year's revenues, and not the total expenditures. It's diluted, because we're drawing from the reserve funds. So it's actually really, really, really close to 10 percent, if you look at the percentage of this year's revenues. I think that one of the purposes, what things we're going to do in this first vote, with the $158,000,000 going to the historic reserve, is to make sure that we're covered. So when that comes in, when the actual revenues come in, we know that, that at least that $158,000 will be in the bank. So it's possible there may be a $3,000 or $4,000 balance left in the historic preservation fund, or dedicated reserve account, and that's entirely legal, because the, the law, the rule is to spend or reserve. So that's the purpose of that first set of votes, is to make sure that we do that. Because, you know, we, we project the revenues as best we can, but it's all estimated, so we're conservative in that way. But the actual percentage is actually just a hair under 10 percent of projected, of projected revenues for this coming year.
Thank you very much.
Sir?
Chris Frall, Precinct 21. I just have a question about the Housing Corporation of Arlington's Downing Square and Broadway projects. It says $500,000 here, and I'm wondering how much is for each project?
May as well just stay up there, Eric.
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, would it be all right if Pam Hallett comes to, to specifically address the breakdown? She's a Town Meeting Member and HD Director. Ms. Hallett, are you in the room? Oh, there she is. Come on up. I mean, the, the short answer is, we're not actually dividing them up, but the project is unified, and I think Pam can explain the, the funding.
Hi, Pam Hallett, Precinct 21, also Executive Director of the Housing Corporation of Arlington. So your question was?
Yeah, just the, the breakdown for Broadway versus Downing, that says $500,000 that we're going to vote on.
We're treating the project as a whole, as both sites, three buildings, $500,000 into the entire project. So we're not breaking down different sources at this point.
You don't have a budget that lays out?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I would just express the desire that, as we, we vote on these items, that we have the ability to vote on some sections separately, so, whether it be historic, or housing, or each, each category. So this is my, my thought. Thank you.
I think he's going to address that.
Yeah, John, I have one, just, just to add on to that a little bit. Thank, thank you very much. This is, as we understood it, we asked, actually had the same question of Pam when she came to us. And we understood that the financing packages that you put together for affordable housing are really complex, and it was advantageous to the state funds that they're able to get, and the, and the bank funds, to combine the two projects, and this is common in the world of development. So, you know, we were comfortable that both projects were viable, and, and, you know, we're, we're ready to roll. But I, but I appreciate the, the request. We'll make an effort, if we have a similar situation in the future, to do a breakout for you.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charles Hartson, Precinct 1. I noticed on page 6 for the Downing, it says that the affordable housing units will be deeded affordable in perpetuity, and I was wondering if the units in the previous, the Kimball Farmer and the 20 Westminster are also in perpetuity, or would those ever go to market rate?
Those are afforded, deeded affordable in perpetuity.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's just to you, Mr. McCabe. You're the last person. If you want, I'll just call it.
Mark McCabe, Precinct 2. I stand to terminate debate on Article 39, and all matters before it.
All in favor of terminating debate, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The debate is terminated. That brings us to the vote on Article 39. Again, it's divided into three parts. We're going to take one vote on all three parts at once, soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready. Tim, is the candidate a couple minutes? Because we can take our break and then come back and vote. We should take our break and then come back and vote after the break? Okay. So let's take our seven-minute break, then come back and do the vote then. Okay, are you ready for a vote? Please come in and sit down. We're going to vote. We want to vote on the CPC now. Mr. Lathwood has his computers back up and running. He's good to go. Alrighty. All right, folks, as soon as you're ready, Tim. We're ready to vote on CPC Article 39. Quiet. As soon as you're ready, we're in the green light, so go ahead, vote 1 to approve the CPC Article 39, 2 to not vote for it. 1 in favor, 2 against. I guess you could vote if you're standing, but time's up. It's an affirmative vote, 174 in the positive, 2 in the negative. 174 to 2. That ends Article 39. Mr. Toasty, can you take all that stuff off the table?
Before I do that, we're taking up Minute Man on Monday.
Before I do that, we're taking up Minute Man on Monday. The budget or the handout on it is in the back table, so be sure you get, you pick up a copy on the way out, so you'll be all set to start right away on Monday. So, the Minute Man budget presentation is back there. Mr. Moderator, I move that Articles 19 through 29 and Articles 31 through 38 be taken from the table.
Okay, the motion to take all those articles off the table, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? All the articles are back on, are back before us. That brings us to Article 29, excuse me, 19. Home Rule Legislation, Municipal Finance Department. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Dunn, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I wanted to open by just talking briefly about the Selectmen's report. There are definitely more errors in it than we would like, and I apologize for that. It is partly the chair's job to shuffle, to shepherd the report all the way through, and my advice to you is to not take a new job on the day, same day that you become chairman. But regardless, it should be of better quality, and I apologize for that. We did a different process for the production of it this year, and we've already worked on how to change the process for next year, and I, so next year, I expect that you will find a higher-quality product, and I apologize for the errors and inconvenience that they have caused. All right, on to Article 19. So, we have, as a town, as a town meeting and as voters, put together all the pieces in place. The treasurer, the comptroller, the assessor, and all, and other parts are now in the, are now in a place where they can be put together. We will now have, be able to enjoy the improved coordination that we get from a municipal finance department. And there's a point that Treasurer Dean Carmen made in his presentation that I think really is worth repeating, which is that one of the other benefits of this is that it really opens up good career paths for a number of people in town who are in smaller, I would say, I would call them more siloed, finance departments, and they're now going to be able to cross-pollinate, and they're going to be able to cross-promote, and I think it's going to be a real benefit to a number of the employees. And I think that that is a benefit of this change that is often overlooked. So, I look forward, I request your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone want to discuss municipal finance department? Yes.
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. And I already brought this up with the town manager, but the wording is such, I know the intent is to select among the comptroller, the, well, the various individuals that will become part of this meeting, the director of the finance department, but it's not clear whether the town manager can appoint somebody other than those individuals. And if there's a way to make that clear, that among the individuals mentioned, the position of comptroller, treasurer and collector, deputy town manager, assistant town manager, that among them, the finance director will be selected rather than having another position, that would be very helpful.
Do you want to address that, or is Mr. Carmen? Mr. Carmen's really excited to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dean Carmen, Town Treasurer. So, the article actually says, "The finance director shall be eligible to also hold the position of blah, 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 blah." It doesn't actually say that they have to hold one of the other four positions. So, when I wrote this, recommended vote with the help of town council, what we were trying to do is provide flexibility the opposite way. So, we didn't want to create, so right now, if this article is approved, not speak for the town manager, but to speak for the town manager. He, he's going to appoint the deputy town manager as the finance director. And so, we were trying to create it so we didn't have to then create a new position in the town. So, if you don't put the word "also" in and list the other positions, you can run into a situation where you now have to create a new position in the municipal government in order to create the finance department. In addition to that, we were also trying to provide long-term flexibility. So, right now, deputy town manager will become deputy town manager slash finance director, but in 20 years, the needs of the town, the people, the personnel are likely going to change, and so we don't want to have to come back to town meeting in 20 years because the most qualified person to take over the position of finance director is also the comptroller, let's say, and ask for the town to change it, or have to do these weird gymnastics within the personnel structure to make it work. So, that's why it's, it's like that. It's sort of said, we have a finance director, and they can also be one of these people, but they don't have to be one of those people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to discuss Article 19, Municipal Finance Department? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of Article 19, we get the green light, please press one for yes, two for no. 200 and the affirmative, seven and the negative, it's a vote, and I sort of clear it. It's a positive vote, and that closes Article 19. Brings us to Article 20.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Dunn, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. This article changes the name of the body from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. As individuals, would be, we would be, become members of the Select Board, and you could, if you were interested, you could address me as Selectman Dunn, and you could address Mrs. Mahon as Selectwoman Mahon, and these would all be appropriate. The proposal came to us as a 10-voter article, meaning the 10 voters signed a petition to put this article on the warrant. Two of them, Clarissa Rowe and Naomi Greenfield, spoke at the hearing. They made the case that the calling a selectman is a persisting, unconscious bias, a cause of unconscious bias. When we look at this body of people, we shouldn't need to, we should try to remove this source of unconscious bias that it is a group of men, and that argument was very persuasive for us. Some of the feedback we got was that this article didn't go far enough and that there are other gendered terms in our bylaws, and we agreed with that feedback, and so in the special town meeting, there will be, there's an article with a broader scope. We also got some feedback after the hearing that Select Board is not sufficiently euphonious. The term is new to us, and for some, it grates on the ear. The proposed alternatives to Select Board that I've heard kicked around have their roots in city government or in governance structures common in New York. Select Board is preferable to those choices because it hews closely to our historical roots as a New England town meeting form of government. We would like to stay close to our historic roots. We are taking the historical name and making an update, and we are aligning it for our time. We do not support naming changes that take us away from our history and towards the traditions of others. Thank you for your support.
I'm here as the warrant article originator, along with Naomi, and I just ask you, please, to support this. I'm a 70-year-old woman. I did this for women that are younger, including a lovely four-year-old in the hallway at the beginning of the meeting. Please support this. It's time, and keep at the Select Board. Thank you so much.
Yep, ma'am.
Naomi Greenfield, Precinct 15. Thank you, Selectman Dunn, for your strong endorsement, and to the whole Board of Selectmen for their endorsement, and to my friend Clarissa Rowe for helping me bring this to the floor. This is my first time speaking in town meeting. I spent all of last year listening, mostly to people who don't look like me, and now I feel ready to use my voice to address all of you tonight. When I was growing up, my brother used to like to tell riddles, the ones that had trick-surprise endings but seemed obvious when the punchline was revealed. This one was an old favorite. A man and his son are driving in a car one day when they get into a fatal accident. The man is killed instantly. The boy is knocked unconscious, but he is still alive. He is rushed to the hospital and will need immediate surgery. The doctor enters the emergency room, looks at the boy, and says, "I can't operate on this boy. He is my son." So, the question in this riddle is, how is this possible? It has stumped people for generations. But the answer is simple. The doctor is the boy's mother. The fact that this riddle continues to stump us illustrates just how common gender stereotypes are and how deeply rooted they are in our minds and in our understanding for what roles women play in society. Fast forward 30 years, and my brother is married to a female surgeon, and I am standing in front of a board of selectmen that is not all men. The warrant article I'm speaking to today offers this simple request. Let's take a step away from language that indoctrinates our gender stereotypes. Let's use language to codify what we're doing in practice, which is to open the door to the voices of the people of Arlington, both women and men. Arlington would not be the first town to recognize the need for this name change. Over 30 Massachusetts towns, Wakefield, Brookline, Newton, and Amherst, to name a few, have switched to non-gendered names, which better reflect the duties and composition of their groups. Just as we as society have switched to police officers and firefighters, it's time to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. This change will reflect our commitment to diversity and inclusion, and will hopefully pave the way for more people of all genders and all backgrounds to have a voice in our community. Last year, I sat in Town Hall as a newly sworn in town meeting member, still trying to figure out where to sit and what buttons to press on my clicker, when I should speak and when I should listen. And as I looked out to the seats at the front of the hall facing me, I was struck to see just how many of those seats were filled by men and just how many of the speakers were. And if you notice this evening, I could count on half of my hand how many were women this evening. I was proud to see Diane Mahon among the sea of men and was always impressed when Christine Bonjourner was called to voice a perspective from the Health and Human Service Department, which she did with confidence and incredible depth of understanding. But both of these women were outnumbered. The body of leadership in our town government is overwhelmingly imbalanced in its representation of 50 percent of our population. I know that changing the name of our board from Selectmen will not immediately change the people who fill those seats, but maybe it soon will because words matter, language matters, and ultimately, representation matters. I would like to briefly address the response to this article, which has been, on the whole, overwhelmingly positive and supportive. You will, however, hear an argument for a different name change, an idea that reminds me of the many times, as a woman, I have suggested an idea only to have it ignored on its merits while a similar idea suggested by a man is given more weight and acknowledgement. I'm guessing many of the few women in the room have had that experience as well. You will also hear the argument that we wait to consider this name change, that we spend town manager time, selectman time, resident time, and taxpayer money to punt this decision to a future date. To that argument, I would love to say that the time is now in 2018. The truth is, 2018 is already too late. This change is long overdue. So, I ask that you consider this article as is, submitted by a woman, supported by women, and by gender non-conforming residents in our town. I also ask that you make this choice today, in 2018, not a year from now, and I hope you will vote yes and be proud of the modest and meaningful change in our town, and I hope you'll be proud by the result. I believe we need to use the language that represents what we strive for and not what we used to be. We need to show girls like my seven-year-old daughter that we want to hear their voices. We need to show them that if they choose to run and if the people of Arlington elect them, that there is a seat at the table for them as a member of the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Schlickman?
Do you have a copy?
I do.
Okay. Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I move my substitute motion, which was placed on seats on Monday. Thank you. We had mailmen. We now have letter carriers. We had patrolmen. We now have police officers. Cities that had aldermen now have city councils, and councilmen are now counselors. Now, we have before us a vote to rename our Board of Selectmen to the Select Board with the best of motives. We want to eliminate gender-specific titles. We want everyone to look at our town government and see themselves in these roles. We have selectmen, but adopting the recommended vote under Article 20 will leave us with selectmen. The Selectmen's recommended, recommended vote says, "Members of the Select Board may be addressed as Select Board Member, Board Member, Selectwoman, or Selectman," and we'll have four of them. A Select Board populated with selectmen? Why? Can't we do better? Not only does Select Board sound ugly, not only does Select Board preserve the gender-based title of selectman, but a Select Board isn't descriptive of the function of the board. It's confusing, and confusions suppress citizen involvement. The Board of Assessors handles assessments. The zoning Board of Appeals handles zoning appeals. The Finance Committee oversees town finances. A Select Board? What do they do? Walk over to Whole Foods and select avocados? Why should our neighbors care enough to go out and vote for a Select Board? Massachusetts uses a form of government that is unique to New England and requires some level of explanation for the uninitiated. People who are new to New England towns have no concept of what a Board of Selectmen does. Unlike city councils and town councils in the rest of the country, selectmen have no legislative power. We are the legislature. The selectmen are the administrative board, the executive branch of our town government. Five selectmen combine to perform the functions of a mayor, so five selectmen are each one-fifth of a mayor. They are essentially a board of fractional administrators. The selectmen supervise the town manager and the operations of the town. Several states have boards of supervisors, either at municipal or county level. A board of supervisors would convey meaning, and members would carry the gender-neutral title of supervisor. We have abolished the Middlesex County Government and its Administrative Board of County Commissioners. We could have a Board of Town Commissioners generating another more descriptive and gender-neutral title for its members. I could have written a substitute motion that offered my choice of names to town meeting, but I don't think our board's new name should be the choice of one person, a few folks, or half the town meeting members in the hall. We should put the question to the community that is the intent of my substitute motion. We are a town filled with creative people, a town filled with people with a tremendous sense of history. We should enlist this talent to generate suggestions for a new and meaningful name and bring them to the people. We can gather interested residents into Town Hall. We can present the leading options to the residents in the form of a survey. We can do this the Arlington way. If you look at the Selectmen's commentary, they tell you that over 30 towns have made this change. Amherst was the first. We're following a flock of mostly tiny towns who followed Amherst's lead? To this, I offer the wisdom of a famous philosopher who said, "If all your friends jumped off a bridge, would you jump too?" And in the midst of towns jumping off of bridges, Amherst just voted to get rid of their Select Board. They adopted a city form of government, eliminating town meeting. They joined the string of cities to pretend to be towns, call themselves towns, and call their city council a town council. Amherst, the town that brought Select Boards to Massachusetts, they won't have one. Arlington is a town rich in Revolutionary War history that named itself after a Civil War battlefield. Let's not become a town rich in Revolutionary War history that named itself after a Civil War cemetery with a poorly-named administrative board because that's what Amherst chose for their defunct board. Please open this to creative suggestions, citizen participation, and support my substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Yontur? Did you have a substitute? Yeah, way to go. I was looking for, the other guy who had a substitute. Yontur? Tim or Yontur? Oh, there you are. Sorry, I didn't see you. Sorry, I didn't see ya.
Can you all hear me? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Timor Kai Yontar, Precinct Seven. I move my substitute motion, which was placed on your chairs on Monday. Thank you. I am no fan of public speaking, so I'll be brief. I fully support the use of gender-neutral terminology for all of our town's governmental bodies and officials. It's about time that we made this change. Now, as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen noted on Monday, if Town Meeting doesn't get something quite right, we can always fix it later, but I think that renaming the Board of Selectmen is a change that will endure for many, many years, so let's get it right the first time. I have submitted a substitute motion for Warren Article Twenty. Yes, submitted by a man, but supported by women and men. I have submitted it because I find the proposed name Select Board to be, in a word, awkward. Board of what? Most Boards are Boards of something, of directors, of trustees, of overseers, or of Selectmen. But Select Board by itself makes it sound like our town's executive body is a piece of wood. Seemed silly. And although dozens of other towns in the Commonwealth have renamed their Boards of Selectmen as Select Boards, we need not follow their lead. Instead, I propose the name Town Council to replace Board of Selectmen, and the members thereof would be counselors, replacing the gendered Select Man and Select Woman. Lest anyone be concerned that the term Town Council is somehow problematic, do not worry. The town of Wakefield voted for this name change recently, and the State Attorney General's Office has approved that it is a permissible name to substitute for Board of Selectmen. In sum, let us do the right thing and change the gender-specific name of our executive body, but let us also pay careful consideration to what we rename it to and favor elegance over jargon. Thank you for your time and your consideration of my motion.
Thank you, sir. I got you, Mr. Paluso. Ma'am, yep. No, not you, Ms. Seuss. You're next. Not you. Her.[740.12][740.12](laughter)
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Mel Goldsite, Precinct Twenty, and vice-chair of the new LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission. I agree with everything that Naomi said, though the doctor could have been the child's other father or any of a (laughter) a number of other family.[767.00][767.00](laughter) But the point stands. I agree that the presence of a woman on the Board is a great model for girls growing up right now. It plants the seeds that a career in politics is a viable opportunity for them. And while some people who are not male are clearly not discouraged by running for office for Select Man, some will be, and that's a problem we absolutely should correct as soon as possible. We're already behind the times, as they have said, and if we want children of all genders to feel free to run for office, we must remove this outdated gender language now. Politics works best when everyone is free to participate. It's not enough to remove prohibitions, such as finally allowing everyone to vote. We need to actively welcome everyone's contributions. In addition to this change being important for girls and women, it's important for transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming folks, too. I see this as a continuation of the work that Town Meeting has done over the past couple of years. In 2016, we added gender identity and expression to the nondiscrimination bylaw. Last year, we established the Rainbow Commission and passed the Trust Act and Sanctuary Town Resolution, and now we can continue that work for an inclusive Arlington by changing the Board of Selectmen to the gender-neutral name Select Board. Please do not postpone this change for another year. It's been such a long time coming, and we need to take this step now to encourage girls, women, gender non-conforming, and non-binary folks to, in fact, people of all genders, to participate fully in our civic life. And I'm just going to put in a quick little plug. Another continuation of this work is in the November election to vote against repealing the transgender equal access law. All of these steps that we take (applause) all come together to make Arlington more equal, more accessible, and more inclusive. I also just want to say while I'm here, if you need to reach the Rainbow Commission, our email is rainbow@town.arlington.ma.us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Seuss?
(inaudible).
Yeah?
What are we talking about?
All three things. All three things that are before us. All three things that are before us, the motions and the recommended vote. Everything's before us.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Jennifer Seuss, Precinct Three. I stand in support of the original motion and opposed to the two substitute motions. About ten percent of Massachusetts towns have already switched to calling their executive Board a Select Board, and that's about ten percent of the largest towns and ten percent of the smallest towns. Besides, no town that has switched its names, and I didn't know about Wakefield until tonight, has done so to anything else but a Select Board. The term reflects a historical name used by Massachusetts towns, and because of that historical connection, it requires no additional explanation. If you live in Massachusetts, I get it. If you come from outside Massachusetts, it's harder. I looked at the boards of the largest seventy-two towns in Massachusetts. This was really fun. These are towns that have at least fifteen thousand people. Seven of those towns, about ten percent, have a Select Board, including Brookline, Amherst, Dartmouth, Winchester, Concord. Of the fifty-seven towns with five Board Members, ten of them, seventeen percent, had no women representation at all. Twenty-six percent of them, forty-five percent, had only one woman, including ourselves. Nineteen of them, thirty-three percent, had two women. Only five of the largest towns that have these five-member boards, three of them have a majority of women with a grand total of three women out of five. The smaller the Board, the worse the ratios are. Of the thirteen largest communities with only three Board Members, nine of them, seventy percent, have no women representation at all. So clearly, we have work to do to make women believe that they can be included in town governance and to make communities more welcoming of female leadership. So why reject the substitute motions? And as it's been made clear, people who are putting forth the substitute motions are not doing so because they're against gender inclusivity. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm a big believer in community outrage and stakeholder engagement. That's my big thing. Stakeholder engagement serves many things. Having multiple voices at the table almost always improves the final decision. It's hard for a small group to make decisions and to fully understand all the subtleties. There is also a big value in giving people an opportunity both to be heard and to hear other people's perspectives. Without that opportunity, people often believe that their opinion is the right opinion, and if the decision is made contrary to their opinion, they think that it's because their opinion hasn't been heard. So getting everyone in the room, hearing everyone's perspective, is incredibly valuable. So, I'm a big believer in community outrage and stakeholder engagement. But there are different standards when it comes to questions of inclusivity. When we were deciding what to do about our growing enrollment crisis, it was important to go to the community, publicly weigh the pros and the cons of all the options available to us, to find the optimal solution. One that isn't perfect but produces best outcome with the least pain. But for issues of inclusivity, optimization is the wrong approach. Suppose that ten percent of our town residents came to Town Meeting and said the term we use is offensive to them, makes them feel slighted, makes them feel not included in town life. In such a case, it would be inappropriate to hold a public forum and try to find a solution that optimized everyone's perspectives. It is still, however, important to hear everyone's perspective, so I'm completely in favor of that, both majority and the minority, so that we can all get into the room and hear each other and hear the concerns and hear the perspectives. But I put to you that this room is actually the room that cares most. We are the stakeholders. So having this discussion in this room is incredibly valuable. I believe that the substitute motion to study the issue feels like a delaying tactic. The motion to change the name to Town Council is confusing. It sounds too much like Count Council, for example. We should choose a name that requires no explanation and best honors our history. A name that most every other Massachusetts town who has made this change has chosen, which is Select Board. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms.[1198.58][1198.58](applause). Mr. LaCorte?
Hanny LaCorte, Precinct Fifteen. I know I'm over quota, but you knew I had to say something about this one. For the entire seven years that I served on the Board of Selectmen, the members of the Board of Selectmen, the majority of them were women. I served with Diane Mahan and Kathy, whose last name I'm not going to remember now, and with Ms. Rowe, Kathy Diaz, and with Clarissa Rowe. We did not at the time think to request this change. I think something about swamps and alligators. And there was a lot of stuff in front of us that felt urgent and that we just never got around to this one. I think this change is really important, and a part of the reason I think it's important is because when Clarissa and I left the Board, we assumed that somewhere along the line, more women would be elected to the Board, and they haven't been. And if what is standing in the way of the women in this room, for example, who should be seeing themselves as future Selectmen, considering, or future Select Persons, excuse me, who should be seeing themselves in that position, is the name of the position, let's just get that out of the way. That said, as someone who comes from a state that has nowhere near the history that this town does, who grew up in a town that was founded in nineteen thirty-eight, I've become very fond of history. And keeping our connection to the history of the idea of selecting a group of people to make decisions by retaining the name Select Board feels really important to me. So hopefully, I haven't been too repetitious of anybody else, and I appreciate your listening to me, and I hope you will support the main motion and neither of the substitutes.
Thank you. Mr. Lended?
Thank you, question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Lended, Precinct Seventeen. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, by researching this particular article, I came across some information which I'd like to share with you, but not possibly sway your opinion on the article one way or the other. According to information that I have, back in nineteen seventy-six, the present Town Manager at that time changed the positions of the Police Chief and the Fire Chief in an effort, as he called it, to revitalize the economy, to Director of Fire Services and Director of Police Services. And that title stayed, as far as I can research, to roughly about two thousand and two. Now, as we know, we always considered Chief Ryan and Chief Jefferson chiefs, and that's what we call them, but I guess according to the information I found, they were called Director of Police Services and Director of Fire Services. Eventually, what particularly happened was, in two thousand and two, home rule legislation was filed to turn around and bring it back to square one and bring the names back to Police Chief and to Fire Chief. One of the reasons I remember was Chief Ryan standing off to my right at one particular time and mentioning that in situations like the FBI would be calling up and saying, "No, I want to speak to the Police Chief. I don't want to speak to the Director of Police Services. You might not be the one that I'm interested in talking to." So I guess what I'm getting at, Mr. Moderator, is not saying I'm for or against this particular article, but one thing that's not being discussed is whatever name is given to the Board moving forward, how do we get that message out that from day one, it is no longer called the Selectman? And how do we possibly save people like the women who work in the Town Hall from saying, "Trust us. We are the old Selectmen's Office. We are the people you want to talk to so that the town doesn't have to go through another embarrassing situation." I think I'd like to hear from the people. All we've heard so far from people is, "Well, the name should be called," and et cetera. But how do we get the message out across the country? And please, let's not just say, "Well, we'll throw it on the internet and just hope for the best." People are going to be calling into our town and saying, "I'd like to speak to somebody with authority, but I don't know if this so-called Board or whatever is the type of person that can handle my problem." Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I hope someone's thought of that. Mr. Tully? I have you, Ms. Stamps.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Tully, Precinct Fourteen. I've never been more afraid to be a straight white guy than tonight.[1528.83][1528.83](laughter) I stand in support of Mr. Schlickman's motion. I think it's important to understand what we're debating here. I think everybody agrees that the time has probably come. You know, it's appropriate to rename this Board and to find a suitable name for it. So I don't think the debate is whether we should change it or not change it. I think the debate is, what's the most suitable name? I think giving us a little bit of time to come up with something that may be a little more euphonious, as Chairperson Dunn indicated, might make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Greeley?
Kevin Greeley, Precinct Eleven. I am a white, sixty-seven-year-old man who, for thirty years, has been called a Select Man, who was raised by a father who was twenty-one years a Select Man, and I was originally against this article. I've seen the error of my ways, especially because of the women that I've served with on the Board of Selectmen.[1618.83][1618.83](applause) And of course, the one we all call the Mayor of Arlington, sitting behind us here, Marie Kripelka. They don't call any of us men on the Board the Mayor of Arlington, but she is known as that. To me, there's no more gender connotation to Selectman than there is to human. But then again, I'm a white, sixty-seven-year-old man who's lived with a father who went through this. If it is true that this change will bring one more woman to the Board of the quality of the five I have served with, then we need to do this. I would add one more thing. Please keep the word "select." For those of you not familiar, this tradition of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, goes back to pre-colonial times, when churches, where the first Europeans came over, and the churches are the center of the community. At the end of religious services, if there were a civic matter, they would hold a Town Meeting, as we do now here, what is it, three hundred years later? In that Town Meeting, they would select a person, a man at the time, to investigate and return the following week after religious services. To this day, the people in Arlington select the five of us to serve. I don't think if we take the word "Board of Selectmen" and change it to "Select Board" does any less in terms of describing what we do. How we behave describes what we do, and how we have behaved all these years describes what we do. For me, in the end, I am a Select Man, and I'd be proud to be a member of a Select Board.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mr. Deist?
I move the question and all issues related there, too.
We have motion to terminate debate on the article and all issues before, including both of these motions. We're going to take an electronic vote. It's a two-thirds vote to terminate debate. And go ahead, vote. One to terminate, two to continue speaking. One to terminate, two to continue speaking. It's an affirmative vote, 169 in the affirmative, 36 in the negative. It is a two-thirds vote, and I so declare it. That brings us to the article itself and the motions. We have, of course, a recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen for now. Then we have Mr. Yonters' motion to change it to Town Council, and we have Mr. Schlickman's motion to punt for a year. So what I'm going to do, first, we're going to vote on Mr. Yonters' to change it to Town Council. Then, depending what happens with that, we're going to go to Mr. Schlickman's to set up a committee and come back to a further meeting. Then, depending upon what happens to both of those, we're going to go to the final recommended vote, be it substituted or not. Is that clear? Okey-dokey. The first vote is on Mr. Yonters' change it to a Town Council. So as soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready, if you're in favor of Mr. Yonters' to change it to Town Council instead of Board, press one for yes, two for no. That's a negative vote, 183 in the negative, 23 in the positive. So 23 yeses, 183 nos. That motion fails. That brings us to Mr. Schlickman's motion to set up a committee to report back in the future on a name change. If you're in favor of setting up a committee, please press one for yes and two for no. Go ahead and vote. 21 in the positive, 185 in the negative. It's a negative vote, and that motion also fails. That brings us to the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen to change it to Select Board. If you're in favor of the recommended vote, please press one for yes and two for no, and go ahead and vote now. It's an affirmative vote, 185 in the positive. Hold on, let me announce it. I've got to announce it. 195 in the affirmative, 6 in the negative. It's a positive vote. 195 to 6. Mr. Dunn, that brings us to Article 21, the Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I think the comment on this article is fairly straightforward. Vision 2020, 2020 is rapidly approaching us, and we need to correct our eyesight yet again. I sat in on at least one of the naming brainstorming sessions at Vision 2020, and so this is the revision for Envision Arlington.
Does Ms. Brazil want to speak to this? Yes. And then Bill, you're next.
Julie Brazil, Precinct 12, and Chair of the Vision 2020 Standing Committee. Do you have my, okay, great. So the basic idea is simple. We want to change our name. But I did want to take a minute, and thank you, and get to a little bit of the history. We've been around a while, and not everyone was necessarily here in Arlington or involved when Vision 2020 came into being. So when we were choosing a name, we wanted to reflect, who are we and what do we want the name to say about us? So for those who weren't around, the short version of the story is, in 1990, a lot of people seemed to recognize that residents and the town needed to find some new ways to work together, to include more people and more ideas. So they formed a committee. It included residents, Town Meeting members, the superintendent, the manager, Director of Planning, the moderator, members of the School Committee, Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, so that they could design a process that would include everyone. And, next slide, more than 1,400 people were involved over the next two years discussing the issues and finally distilling their ideas into nine vision statements presented to Town Meeting in 1992. This is a good time to point out that there were three different votes taken to create Vision 2020 as we know it now. In 1992, Town Meeting approved Article 41 that created the Standing Committee with our mission to continue that process of open town-wide participation that had begun in 1990. We're proposing an amendment tonight to that language to change the name. The following year, in 1993, Town Meeting approved Article 19 to adopt the nine vision statements as goals of the town, and Article 20 that added a new section to the Town Bylaws saying, "All town officials shall consider the goals of Vision 2020 as delineated in Article 19 or as same as subsequently amended by any future Town Meeting." So that's what we're looking at next. If we, it's time to update and decide if there are amendments to propose to a future Town Meeting to the nine vision statements approved in 1993. So we will be taking the next couple of years to go back to our roots. The initial report to Town Meeting in 1992 included not only nine vision statements, but a summary of two years' worth of public discussions. For each area of the vision, there were provided strategies and specific actions. I couldn't include all of the actions for that particular strategy, but they also recommended long-term environmental planning to conserve energy and to reduce the use of pollutants. Currently, we have task groups actively working in several of the nine areas, and they have generated new lists of actions and put forward warrant articles over the years as needed. However, as we approach the year 2020, it feels important to consider all the goals and to include new residents in developing ideas when we haven't focused attention recently. We hope that the name Envision Arlington tells people they are welcome to join in and be part of that process. One goal we have is to create a cycle of discussion, work, and review, so we regularly gather the people who have been working on diversity or education or environment, so they can share their process, their progress and their ideas with each other. Each of the nine vision areas will have different areas, conversations. They'll all probably start with, are there new things we'd like to include in the vision statement? But then the conversation can go many ways. Should we consider taking the Culture and Recreation goal and making a separate Recreation and Arts and Culture statement? Do we include biking and walking as part of recreation, or is that more related to transportation or infrastructure? Should we add transportation as a specific element to one of the goals? And how does any of this connect to the master plan or to other action plans like the Open Space Plan? There will be lots of questions, and finding the answers together is what Vision 2020, or soon a Vision Arlington, should be about. So when we want to start a discussion for a particular vision area, how do we start? So we created a chart that shows all of the formal Town Committees, the neighborhood groups, Town officials, employees, and businesses related to each of the nine goals. This is just a corner of that chart. It's only three of them, and I'm sure you've seen the larger one at public events, and it's posted on our webpage. A good next step to expand on this is to start adding to this graphic action plans and major event work underway in each area. For example, the Arts and Culture Action Plan was recently completed, and it had lots of public input. So if we add that and similar plans to the chart, we'll see the areas where we need new conversations. So that's what we envision. At the end of the process, we will have had public discussions, offered surveys, and maybe facilitated online comments and feedback as ideas develop. We will have evaluated if the current vision needs to be added to or edited, and we'll have strategies for the next few years. We'll form task groups and partnerships with other committees working on similar issues, and then volunteers and employees and officials will get to work. I hope you all support that vision and Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Berkowitz?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Bill Berkowitz, Precinct 8. I'm a big fan of Vision 2020. I was fortunate and privileged to have been a member of the original Formation Committee when it got started back in the early 1990s. So I welcome Envision Arlington as a successor to it, and I also feel motivated to offer a suggestion for its future, which is that when the new organization gets together to reexamine its goals and its structure, that it give particular focus to resident participation, to citizen participation, which is the lifeblood of this town or of any town. Obviously, people here in Arlington do participate in civic affairs, no question about that, but there is much room for improvement. So when we look at the 16 percentage, 16% voting percentage in this one's elections, that's not good. When we look at the falloff of two-thirds in Vision 2020's survey returns this year, even though we heard reasons for that given on Monday, that's definitely not good. When we heard also at Monday's meeting that Vision 2020 has had challenges in finding volunteers to work on the survey, that's not good either. So I do hope that the new Envision Arlington will dedicate a committee or work group to monitor and to citizen participation and to develop ways that can be increased. There are plenty of ways that citizen participation in Arlington can be improved, specifically to mention a few. We can focus on nurturing and stimulating, encouraging neighborhood groups, even block groups, helping new ones get started, because neighborhoods are where relationships get formed and solidified, and relationships lead to participation. We should leverage the existing structure of Town Meeting and the presence of you all, 200-plus Town Meeting members, who are in their ways, in our ways, ambassadors of participation. I believe for a long time that Town Meeting members have an external role to play in their neighborhoods and precincts in addition to the internal role we play inside of Town Hall. We should be doing more of this. We should encourage each precinct to have a precinct meeting each year, and I believe that there were fewer of them this year. We should encourage online groups, and Facebook groups for precincts. We should contact new residents about participation opportunities in town. We could start a virtual welcome wagon, as has been done in other communities around here. We should work with the Chamber of Commerce and real estate agents to revise and distribute a guide for new residents, as the Chamber used to do. We should recruit volunteers and participants through the Arlington list by placing interest in property tax bills, by reinvigorating efforts to reach out to seniors who are likely to have more time. We should ramp up civic education, community education, starting in kindergarten, with more parent visits, more parents in the classrooms, more field trips to community locations starting at an early age. We should start, we could start contests with prize awards for best neighborhood ideas. We could provide mini grants for neighborhood ideas like we used to do in the past.
Mr. Berkowitz? How does this relate to the article? All these things we should be doing?
Yes, in terms of what the new Envision 2020 should be doing. We could use capital planning funds to place electronic kiosks in public places in town with events of the day or community or town needs. Finally, we could have next year's Vision 20, Envision Arlington survey be about participation itself. We could use the survey as a means...
Yeah, Bill, you're telling Vision 20 what they should do, and it's close to telling us why we should change the name.
I'll wrap up.
Okay.
I'll just say in conclusion of my remarks that we, it's a wise community should create a culture of participation in the community. When we, when you arrive, we should expect something from everybody. As I was taught, everybody is a perfect something. In other words, everybody is a community asset, has something to give, and a smart community will enable them to give in. So thank you for your attention. I do hope you support the motion, and I do look forward to a bright and visionary future in Arlington. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Schlickman, did you want to speak to the issue? Yeah, thank you.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I think we should change, no.
You sure you don't want to study it for you?
And if you look at the roll call, I did vote for the prevailing motion on 20. I do believe strongly in gender-neutral names. I work in a predominantly female profession. However, however, the thing I want to say is, my first year here in Town Meeting was 1993, when we formed the later votes to establish Vision 2020. For those who weren't around, I don't think you can understand how controversial this was. This was some sort of a plot or something. And what has happened as a result, we've had this wonderful planning group filled with energy and volunteers, and 2020 seemed so far away then, and we now have to change the name because of that. Just want to say, this organization has done great work, and I hope that Envision Arlington prospers for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to discuss the article? All right, we have, of course, a recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen to change the name of Vision 2020 to Envision Arlington Standing Committee. As soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready, all in favor of that change, please press one for yes, two for no. It's an affirmative vote, 194 in the affirmative, zero in the negative. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. And that closes Article 21. Two new names and two articles. That brings us to Article 22. Yes, please. Oh, Select Board Chairman, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At Monday's Board of Selectmen meeting, that is what we were then, we moved no action on this article. There is hypothetically something that we could do with the new marijuana regulations that were approved just two weeks ago, but we're, it's really, we're not prepared, you know, with that short time, and there's no, there's no money that we would collect anyway at this time.
So there was an oversight. We now have, of course, a recommended vote of no action. All in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? It's unanimous vote of no action, and I so declare it. And that brings us to Article 23. Now, was there something about 23 you guys wanted to put in the table?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I moved this be postponed to Monday night so that we can distribute the report. The report has been approved, but has not been distributed to the meeting.
Okay, a motion to postpone to Monday night, all in favor?
We did get a copy. We've been up here scrambling, saying, "Holy cow, we screwed this one up." So if everybody's got it, then we're ready.
Everyone has one.
All right.
You wait. We already made the motion.
You know, seriously, we were up here saying, "How the heck did we drop this one?" All right, everybody else has got it.
Dan, hold on. We already made the motion. We have to just get rid of the motion. All in favor of postponing, please say yes. All opposed, say no.
No!
The motion to postpone is denied. We now have, of course, Article 23. Parliamentary procedure, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize for over-talking. So Article 23, Community Development Block Grants. This is an unusual article, and the money that is distributed here is actually... This is an unusual article, and the money that is distributed here is actually not allocated by the Town Meeting. It actually, it comes through the federal government and the Board of Selectmen with the Town Manager. So it's actually a vote of six people that makes the allocations of the Community Development Block Grant. There's a Community Development Subcommittee that sits, and we make recommendations to that group of six people. I will say what I said last year, which is that President Trump's budget attempts to zero this out, and so we live, I would say, from year to year in anticipation that this may go away. And I'll say that even before President Trump, it did continue to decline year to year. All that said, we made a one-year reallocation of some reserve funds that meant that this year's allocation is larger than it has been in past years. So the previous, I'd say, like, at least six years that I've been on the board, every year was incrementally slightly smaller. This one is actually a little bit, or somewhat, larger. So with that, so what we do is we ask for Town Meeting's endorsement of this budget. Thank you.
Anyone wish to discuss Community Development Block Grants? Any questions at all? Yes, sir. Come to the microphone, I can't hear you.
Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12, point of order. When we voted for Select Board, Section 3 says this actual take effect upon its passage. Do we need to amend the current article to Select Board?
Mr. Heinz can elucidate us on that.
No. Doug Heim, Town Council, no, we don't. We're all set.
Technically, nothing takes effect until the meeting dissolves, so there's still really the Board of Selectmen, but, yeah.
Doug Heim, Town Council. Bylaw amendments have to be approved by the Attorney General's Office. That usually takes at least 90 days, and then home rule legislation to actually affect the change of Select Board in the Town Manager Act will depend on how quickly the legislature gets around to it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to discuss CDBG application funds? Miss?
Rebecca Youngkin, Precinct 7. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just had a quick question on the section, Public Facilities and Improvements, number four, acquisition of operations location for FoodLink. My question was, do we have a plot of land already identified that's available for $300,000? And also, where would the money come to actually build the building?
Mr. Chaplin?
Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. They do not have yet a defined location, although they have several options that they're still reviewing, and they are also doing a private fundraising campaign for further capital to either build or outfit an existing building.
Rebecca, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the recommended vote, vote of selectmen to endorse the application, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. It's a unanimous vote, 198 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative. That closes Article 23, brings us to Article 24, Revolving Funds.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Dunn, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Revolving funds are a series of funds that are set aside for such that Monday...
Yes, sir. Mr. Lathwood, the previous slide said 22 as opposed to 23. Did the votes get properly designated in your system?
Yes, they were properly designated as part of 23.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein. You're back, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is the various funds, the ins and the outs, and the resulting, and the maximums and the resulting balances. The supplemental report has the additional detailed information, or further detailed information on each of the funds. Ask for your support. Thank you.
Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions about revolving funds? No questions on revolving funds. Very well, we're ready for a vote on revolving funds, Article 24. And... All in favor, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. 195 in the affirmative, 0 in the negatives, unanimous vote, and I so declare it. That closes Article 24, and that brings us to Article 26, Position Reclassification. We have a force recommend a vote of the Board of Selectmen, and someone had a question on that. Ma'am.
Yeah, go ahead and ask. Well, I put a hold on this article because...
Oh, name and precinct?
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. I put a hold on this article because on Part 2 and 3, there were no dollar signs associated with the positions added or the positions being deleted, and it was later explained to me that this was just for planning purposes. But what I noticed in looking over the budget, which we're not getting to till Monday, is that there were several positions that probably were in the planning stage last year, which are now new positions just in the budget, and there was no discussion about what these positions entail during the planning stage, so, and the rationale for putting them in. So I wanted to know, Mr. Moderator, when is the appropriate time to discuss the rationale for why several positions are being added potentially for next year? Is it now under Article 26, or do we just wait till next year till all of a sudden new positions appear in the budget?
Well, it would be either now or the budget. It's appropriate under both articles.
If I could just explain, there's three sections here. The first section is reclassifying a current existing position because somebody has requested that their job duties have changed, or should, or the job duty should qualify them for a higher position. And so those positions already exist in the budget, and if these pass, then those amounts of money will be added to next year's budget. So that is A through M, and the total appropriation is $54,429. Now, 2 doesn't add any positions in the budget. We have a pay and classification plan, and in that pay and classification plan, it lists all the different unions and all the different positions that exist in the plan. Now, it doesn't mean that position actually exists in the budget, but it's in the plan. Now, a plan has to be kept up to date. So in Item 2, they're adding the following positions into the plan, the pay and classification plan. They're not adding people. The only place you can add people is in the budgets. So Item 2 adds positions into the plan. Item 3 is deleting positions from the plan. These positions were determined to be either obsolete or no longer needed. It doesn't eliminate a body. It doesn't do anything to the budget. It just eliminates them from the pay and classification plan. So 1 affects people for individual reasons, and then 2 is just affecting the pay and classification plan, as does 3.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on position reclassification? If not, we're ready for a vote on Article 26. We have the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen for position reclassification. All in favor, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Excuse me? Oh, it's the Finance Committee. Oh, sorry. 26. 195 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative. It's an affirmative vote, and I so declare it. That closes Article 26 and brings us to Article 27, Collective Bargaining.
I move that this article be laid upon the table. Our three-year contracts for, I think, almost all the town unions are up on June 30. The Town Manager is in the process of negotiating with all the unions. They have, I think, either two or three settled, but they're in the process of trying to get as many of the rest settled. So next week, I'm hoping there will be a sheet on your chairs, either Monday or Tuesday. Probably don't want to go much beyond that, with all the unions that have been settled, and if there aren't any settled, we'll set aside a reserve account to pay for those. So that's the reason I'm moving that this article be tabled, or laid upon the table.
All in favor of tabling Article 27, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is unanimous vote to table. The article's on the table. That brings us to Article 28, Appropriation Parking Operating Costs. Looks like they want a bunch of money for parking. Anyone want to discuss it? Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. As I discussed with the manager and deputy town manager prior to the meeting, when I relayed a series of questions to them, you'll see there are no benefits listed as offsets from this fund. Their statement was, and it's fine with me, that we'll look, we should look for that next year. Very quickly, when I was looking to see where these offsets are applied, I believe Budget 20 is the Fire Department. So I think that might be... Pardon? Now, in the, well, 19 is Police Services, and 20 is Fire Services. So I think the offset should be somewhere in Police Services, which is where it is listed under Budget 19. So perhaps we can administratively change that to Parking Enforcement, Budget 20? Is that correct? 19, that should be 19, not 20.
Mr. Chaplin, do you agree with that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
To administratively change the offset to Parking Enforcement to Budget 19. Whoops. Anyone else wish to discuss parking? If not, oh, Mr. Leonard, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Leonard, Precinct 17, with a quick question. When the language says to fund appropriate operating costs of new parking equipment, it might sound like I'm splitting hairs, but is that brand-new parking equipment, or is that new parking equipment which replaces old parking equipment?
We're talking about the actual warrant article itself?
Right. It says to a sum of money to fund appropriate operating costs of new parking equipment. Is the new parking equipment replacing existing parking equipment that we already have, or is it brand-new parking equipment that the town is purchasing?
Well, Mr. Chaplin can answer it.
Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. We're specifically talking about operating the parking meters that are currently in place in the lots in the town center and on the street meters in the town center.
Because what I'm interested in is if we're getting new parking equipment replacing old parking equipment, are we getting our money's worth out of what we're getting?
Well, we're renting them also.
We are renting them.
Yeah, I think so. Pretty sure.
Mr. Moderator, Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. That is correct. Part of the parking meter operations line totaling $167,605 includes the lease payments for the street meters, which is approximately a $47,000 a year lease payment for the street meters. To be clear, there's no proposal here for replacement of any of the parking equipment that is currently either on the streets or in the lots. So we're not, we are not purchasing or replacing in this year's budget any parking equipment.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to discuss parking? If not, we're ready for a vote on Article 28. We have the recommended vote of the Board of Finance Committee, I imagine. All in favor, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. 27, 28. 197 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative. It's affirmative vote, and I so declare it. 2, and that closes Article 28, brings us to Article 29, Budgets. We're going to do that Monday. Do you want to table that?
I move that we postpone Article 29 until April 30, Monday.
Second. All in favor of postponing to Monday, please say yes.
Yes!
A motion to adjourn at 3 minutes to 11. And any motions for reconsideration? Yes, Mr. Tosti?
Yeah, to my list, could you add 26 and 28?
Mr. Tosti's moved to reconsider 19, 30, 39, 26, and 28. Any other notices of reconsideration? Mr. Rudeman? Rudeman on 20. Any others? All in favor of adjourned, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? All right, we'll see you Monday. We have eight articles left, so be prepared. Monday, we're probably going to finish.